Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to September 27 Sayerville Board of Education Meeting. Please take notice that this public meeting of the Sayerville Board of Education was transmitted to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger in accordance with Chapter 231 PL Law 1975, further in accordance with NJASC 104-6 through 21. A copy of this notice was posted outside the Board Secretary's office and a copy was also filed with the Clerk of the Borough of Sayerville. Please rise to salute our flag.
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Hill, can we have her roll call please?
Mr. Valka?
Here.
Mrs. Bloom?
Here.
Mr. Fernandez?
Here.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Here.
Mrs. Pabon?
Here.
Ms. Pylock?
Here.
Mr. John Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Patrick Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Esposito?
Here.
Thank you, and while you're at the mic, can you please summarize the executive for us?
The Board discussed personnel, including but not limited to agenda items, negotiations related to the Sayerville Education Association and a student matter.
Thank you. I don't believe there's any correspondence, so at this time, can I please have a motion to approve the minutes from our last executive and private sessions in our last meeting?
So moved.
Mrs. Bloom? Mrs. Napolitano, I think?
No.
Mrs. Pabon, I apologize. Roll call please.
Mr. Valka?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
I'm abstaining on the prior board minutes and yes to everything else.
It was just the minutes.
Then everything.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mrs. Pabon?
Yes.
Ms. Pylock?
I'm abstaining as well.
Mr. John Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick Walsh?
Yes.
And Mr. Esposito.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so one of our favorite parts of the meeting is when we have our student representatives and they're back for a new year. Thank you. Gianna, you were here last year.
Yeah.
Right? Okay, and Morgan, first time around?
Yeah.
Okay, good luck, you guys will do great.
Morgan was practicing this morning.
She was? Good job. All right. Gianna, what do you got for us?
Good afternoon, Board of Education members and administrators. I'm Gianna Pesci and I'm the High School Board of Education Representative. First, I would like to say happy new school year and I hope everyone is doing well. Now to begin, an extracurricular activities. Be ready because homecoming night is coming up on October 7th with the theme of Hollywood. Here are the names of our seniors who made it into the homecoming court. For boys, Derek Aban, Kaden Holmes, Jaden Otto, Samo Mokeji, and Muthaseem Noor. And for girls, Madison Doherty, Fiona Biba, Maya Jackson, Sophia Costa, Allison McCracken, and Alicia Miller. This night will take place home on our bomber field with a bombers football game against Franklin High School. Also, 16 seniors from our bombers football team have chosen an educator who has made an impact on their lives. These educators will be honored at the pep rally and the homecoming game on October 7th. We hope to see you there. Now for athletics at the high school. The football team's record is 2-2, with losses to Phillipsburg and North Brunswick, but with wins against New Brunswick and Edison. Leading the team right now, senior captain Kaden Holmes, leading with total passing yards and also with the lead in rushing yardage. Senior Sean Sparrow, leading with total receiving yards. Sophomore Dariel Jerez, leading with total tackles. Lastly, junior captain Connor Walsh, leading with the most sacks. This week's game is away in East Brunswick at 7:00. The girls soccer team record is 4-4, with losses against Woodbridge, Matutchen, St. Thomas Aquinas, and Colonia, but with wins against North Plainfield, South Plainfield, New Brunswick, and North Brunswick. Today, they have an away game in Matutchen at 7:00. The boys soccer team record is 5-3, with losses against Piscataway, Perth Amboy, and Edison, but with wins against Piscataway Tech, JP Stevens, Colonia, and two wins against Woodbridge. Today, they have an away game again at Piscataway High School at 6:00. Field hockey's team record is 3-3, with losses to East Brunswick, Matutchen, and Old Bridge, but with wins against North Plainfield, South Plainfield, and Piscataway. At their game versus Piscataway, Amika Patel, Elizabeth Astarita, Caroline Astarita, and Mackenzie Hastings scored goals with Amoli Patel, while Amoli Patel had two assists and Amika Patel had one. Today, they verse South Brunswick home at 4:00. The girls tennis team record is 2-4, with losses to Edison, Spotswood, Old Bridge, and Matutchen, but with wins against Piscataway and Highland Park. Today, they had an away match in Woodbridge at 4:00. The girls cross-country team is 2-0 undefeated, with wins against North Brunswick and Woodbridge. All the students, win or lose, show sportsmanship throughout their games or matches representing the Sayerville War Memorial High School in a proud manner. Thank you for your time.
Great job.
Thank you.
Gianna, when you speak about Connor Walsh, you have to give like the number of sacks, you know what I mean? So the father can brag a little, you know?
I thought you did a great job giving some poor statistics.
I like it, I like it. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Pesci?
No questions but a comment, great job, as always.
Thank you.
You're kicking it off good. Morgan, I hope you practiced. All right, you ready?
She's ready to rock and roll.
All right, let's do it.
Good evening, Board of Education members and administrators. My name is Morgan Coons, SMS Student Council Board of Education Representative. I would like to begin with the Community Service Club. The Community Service Club will be hosting a sixth grade fall festival on Friday, October 14th, along with the SMS Student Council immediately after school. An interest meeting was held on September 15th. There will be morning announcements and chalk walk during October for the Week of Respect, Violence Awareness Week, and Red Ribbon Week. During the Week of Respect, there will be a collaboration. High school seniors will write letters to eighth grade students. The SMSPTO is looking forward to a great year. The SMSPTO school store is open every Tuesday and Thursday during lunch periods. The Fall Food Truck Festival is scheduled for Friday, October 14th, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on school grounds. It is open to the public, free admission, you pay at the food trucks, there is also a tricky try and a 50-50 raffle. Reminder to join the PTO at www.mySNSPTO.com. The Meadow Farms fundraiser ends October 14th. The Sayerville Middle School Student Council held elections in June, and we are proud to announce the following executive board members. President Jared Zivonovich, Vice President Leleani Rodriguez, Treasurer Kimberly Garcia, and Secretary Mackenzie Shaq. We had a very productive meeting on Friday, September 9th, and are looking forward to the year. We will be co-hosting a sixth grade social after school on Friday, October 14th, along with the Community Service Club. The executive board members are excited to attend their first NJASC Fall Conference on Tuesday, October 11th, along with their advisor. They will have the opportunity to attend workshops and network with other student council members from all over New Jersey. The Class Council Sixth Grade Executive Board election will be held this week. Class Council will be holding a T-shirt fundraiser for students to purchase T-shirts with their graduation year on the back, class of 27, 28, and 29, beginning October 1st. Class Council will also be hosting their Class Wars event for the second year in a row. Now on to the Sayerville Middle School sports. The boys' middle school soccer, blue and gray teams are excited to kick off their season this week. It is the first time we will be fielding two teams at the middle school, blue and gray. The middle school also would like to welcome our new coach, who will be joining us to coach the gray team, Brian Truhan. The boys' blue soccer team record is 0-3, and the boys' gray soccer team is 0-1. The SMS Lady Bomber Soccer. The SMS Girls Soccer Team is off to a strong start with some strong efforts at our tryouts. Our teams have been chosen and the blue and gray teams are ready to get to work. We are excited for a strong returning group of eighth graders that have been putting in extra work over the summer. We have started our clothing fundraiser, which ended on September 19th. The girls' blue soccer team record is 2-1, and the girls' gray soccer team record is 0-1. The middle school field hockey team is excited to announce they have two teams participating this year with 41 girls. The eighth graders are looking forward to leading the program are Gianna Cofaro, Deanna Cantalupo, Paige Cleary, Adriana Grasso, Emma Hart, Julia Halarkzik, Madison Ronnick, and Danica Unkel, and Elizabeth Wilkinson. The program currently has a 1-0 record with a win from the gray team. The program is growing as we are developing four goalies this year. The girls will celebrate their first week of games with a pizza party Friday, September 24th. Coach Lawson and Coach Bondi are eager to see so many girls interested in the sport of field hockey and look forward to continuing growth and success in the future. Thank you for your time and support.
All right, terrific job.
Excellent job, Morgan.
Thank you.
Morgan, I have one question.
Sorry to cut you off.
I'm sure it's probably the same question.
Yeah.
I heard we have a new principal in the middle school right now.
Don't look left, don't look.
How's the new principal doing?
He's really funny on the loudspeaker in the morning.
He is famous for his announcements, we've heard that before. So it's going well, that's great.
You really don't have to lie to us just because he's here, we all know what he's really like.
That was a great job, Morgan.
Thank you.
And Gianna.
A great job, Morgan.
Good job, girls. Thank you.
So, you know, when I'm at the, when we go Legislative Day, when we speak to the students, I always say the same thing to them, send us links to whatever fundraiser you're doing. You know, a lot of us just buy clothes, you know, we give it away or whatever the case is, but we buy it and help you guys out, so send us the links, okay? Send it to Dr. Labby and he'll, you know?
It's usually in the bomber blast app.
The links to the fundraisers?
They tell you when the fundraiser is, it's a little fly. Come on, no links. What are you?
Lucy, he's the president, he needs an executive summary.
Ladies, have people been talking to you about the elections on Thursday? The mock elections?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're getting ready for that, right?
Yeah, for student council, I have to run it, so it's all lunch periods.
And then, I think, Morg, at the middle school, we're doing it during social studies periods, right?
Yeah, I think so.
So we're really gearing up at the high school, middle school, and all of our schools for the cool the schools referendum mock election on Thursday.
One question? One question?
One question.
Would you pass, not pass?
Yep, one question, yep. And obviously, the referendum question is written in a language that our students will understand. It's adorable at the preschool level.
I wish they would do that for all of us.
We'll have elections across the district on Thursday. I'm so much looking forward to seeing our middle schoolers vote during social studies, and I'm even going to jump over to the high school, I think, on Thursday to check out the high school students during lunches.
Great, great job.
Thank you, ladies, outstanding job.
Thank you.
We're so proud of you.
Now, you can certainly stay for the next hour and a half, or you can leave.
We won't be offended.
That's why you're here.
Don't rush.
All right. Thank you.
Goodbye, ladies.
Bye-bye.
See you tomorrow, Morgan.
Bye.
Bye, guys. Okay, where are we? So, I just want to point out to everyone, I don't know, thank you to Dr. Labby, staff, Jimmy, great accommodations.
And Ms. Hill for her financial planning for this.
Thank you, Erin Millie. It's great, it's just so much nicer than where we were, and I thank you so much, really. I know it's not easy to, you know, put all this stuff together, and you did it quickly. What, Lucy?
It's not nicer than where we were.
I think, well, you don't think it's nicer than at the middle school?
I think it's equal.
Cafeteria?
I think we need to paint all of those squares.
Well, we'll get there, and there'll be air conditioning when we cool the schools. In fact, the air conditioning here is coming real soon because this is one of the large spaces that we've talked about. That we spent close to $19 million in various funding to go ahead and ensure that we're going to have air conditioning in every large space in every building, this room included. So, as you can see, they have already begun the infrastructure work here. Once we get the mechanicals, this room will have AC.
I did have a suggestion, I said we should have all of our pictures pasted up there so I could throw darts at them.
No, thanks.
Somehow, I think my face will get the most holes.
No. Listen, very briefly, I just want to say something and then I'm going to pass this on to John. Dr. Labby informed us this evening that we have, I guess, an agreement, right?
Yes, we have an agreement for a memorandum of agreement, yes.
With the SEA. It's an, listen, I just want to say one thing, and I served one time on it, and this committee, and John, you'll elaborate, this committee is probably the most difficult and not sought-after committee, believe me, nobody wants to be on it, it's a hard job, but you guys did a hell of a job, I really want to commend you, it's not easy, there's a lot of language, a lot of loopholes. Erin, I mean, Dr. Labby couldn't speak more highly of you and the job you did, so we all owe you gratitude, a debt of gratitude, thank you, and I'm not going to say anything else, John, it was your committee, please, just...
Thank you, Anthony, and like Anthony said, we did come to an agreement, and it is the job. I've been on negotiating committees before, but this was the first time chairing one, and it was one of the most difficult negotiations we've ever had. I mean, remember, we negotiated through a pandemic, through record inflation, through a national teacher shortage. It was difficult, but I want to especially thank my committee, which was Eloy Fernandez and Eileen, they were excellent from the beginning, they were dedicated to, they were open-minded and dedicated to getting a good contract that showed how much we value our staff, which we do extremely well, and I think this is one of the best contracts I've seen since, you know, I was teaching here or a board member here. But they were also adamant that it had to make financial sense for the district, and not only us, but the future districts of Sayerville, and I want to thank them for their hard work and their dedication to both the staff and the taxpayer to town. You guys are a pleasure to work with and thank you. I want to thank Erin, like Anthony said, Erin Hill was, in my opinion, she's the best in the business. It's one of the hardest things to find, is a great business administrator, and anytime, and like I said, there were so many changes because of the different, because, well, we're now negotiating, what's it going to look like at the end of COVID, what's it going to look like now? Every time we threw a different deal at us or a different situation, she'd pull out her computer and she would have the numbers in no time, so I want to thank you, Erin, for your creativity and your honest assessments. I want to thank the SEA, who, Kevin Bloom especially, and Krista Dulusha, the new president, who were tough, tough advocates for their union. They fought hard for their staff, but always respectfully, always respectfully, always, I mean, it was, like we said, it was hard, and it was contentious, and it was adversarial at times, but in all the right ways, like a union is supposed to fight for their members. And they did a great job of it, and I hope everyone appreciates, and I'm sure our staff will appreciate the work they did for them, because it is, in my opinion, a great deal for our staff, a great deal for the future of the district. I think when this, it's a five-year deal, I'm not going to go into details now, but I think the main thing is at the end of this five years, whoever negotiates next, it's not going to be me, whoever negotiates next, I think is going to have a way easier job of moving teachers to our scale, because it has been hard. One of the challenges we've had here has been our guides, and that meant that we had to take some medicine, and the SEA had to take some medicine, and both sides were willing to do the hard work to make a better future for Sayerville. And I think we're going to compete for teachers with everybody, and I think we're going to, you're going to see great results, because no matter what gets said during a negotiation, I can guarantee you, and I know we have a lot of me, Lucy, ex-teachers up here, and I know everyone else on this board feels the same way, some of them are, we love our staff, you know, we want our people to stay, we value them, and I'm super excited about the deal, and I think as the details, you know, get out to the staff, and I think, you know, there's going to be a lot of happy people, and I look forward to a great future for Sayerville. And again, with that, I want to also thank Dr. Labby, who guided us through this as always, as he always does, and again, he's somebody who, he's the real deal, you know, he cares for the children of this district more than anybody I know, and I'm so thankful for him and everything he does, and especially guiding us through and making sure that our staff's taken care of, and making sure that our town is taken care of, and that we can do this, reward our teachers, but also do it in a safe financial way that, you know, keeps all our programs and allows us to really give our kids the best environment. And the number one thing we value with our kids is the teachers, so I'm glad we can take care of them, but there's also a lot of other things that go along with that, to make it a great place, have three kids in the district here, and this is where I want them to go to school, and I'm happy to go to school here, and I feel safe that they go to school here because we have great security, and all the things that, and we did our best to reward that, and I hope everybody is happy, and we'll keep moving on to other things to make the district better. So again, thanks to everybody for your support, and especially Eileen and Eloy, you guys were great to work with.
You know what's interesting, John? You said it beautifully, by the way. You said it beautifully. And just one thing, and we won't go into details, but I think what makes me the happiest and a lot of other board members, is that this was a very evenly distributed equitable agreement, would you say? Is that the proper way to put it?
I would agree.
And it was important to us for everyone to get a little, a nice increase, everyone across the board. So again, great job, you just thought of every little detail, and you guys put a hell of, a hell of an agreement together, so thank you.
Can I just add something?
Sure.
Just personally, I feel that the SEA is really under good leadership with Krista Dulusha.
Dulusha.
Dulusha, because I personally was attacked early on in the negotiations, and I did not appreciate it, so I think that the level of leadership has improved, and I think the union members are going to be very happy, and I'm very happy with the final settlement, so thank you.
Okay. Obviously, you pretty much covered everything, John, so there's not a lot for me to cover, but I just also want to thank the SEA for their valiant efforts in representing their membership. I want to thank you, John, for always protecting us and your leadership, and me personally as a new board member and new on this committee, all the help and guidance you gave me as well. I want to thank you and Dr. Labby as well, you've been, as always, you've been tremendous. And to piggyback on what John said about Erin, as in my other life as an auditor, I deal with a lot of business ministers, probably more than anyone else does here, so I'm telling you, you're excellent at what you do, and that comes from someone who deals with 100 business administrators a year, so I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Thank you, Ms. Pabon.
Can I just say something? I know I can't speak to this, but I will say to everyone, the phrase that came to mind as this was going on was what I always tell my husband, "Don't tell me that you love me, show me." And we showed our people that we love them by settling this contract.
I tried that with my wife, it didn't work.
It doesn't work. It doesn't work with my husband either.
Okay, moving on, I don't believe there's any presentations, Dr. Labby?
No.
I read correctly. Okay, then we'll have Mr. Fernandez kick us off with finance and infrastructure, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on September 13th. We discussed the referendum and the use of the polling locations. We also discussed completed projects such as roofs and boilers, and the status of the solar PPA. 132 Main Street is still working, progressing, however, we're sourcing different concrete vendors, which is a little bit of a slow up for us. Solover HVAC is fairly complete, with a few punchless items. Our annual single audit is underway and is being conducted virtually for the time being. I also want to thank Erin and Patrick, our Director of Transportation. The township fueling stations had technical difficulties and we weren't able to refuel there, and they did an excellent job of finding alternate locations for us. In addition, Patrick went out of his own pocket to forward money for, so we can fuel our buses so our kids can get to school on time and wouldn't interrupt their learning, so I think that's well above and beyond what we expect any of our employees to do. And like I said, Erin did an excellent job, and short notice finding fueling, as you know, it's not, you can't just pull up to Exxon and fuel up our buses, so it's an excellent job of what you did in finding locations for that, so thank you.
That's great to hear, and let me tell you something, Dr. Labby, Erin, you'll appreciate this probably, you remember when we had to fill that position? Like, this SEA committee, nobody wants it, nobody wants to be Director of Transportation, right? It's like the worst job in the world. This guy, what I thought was going to be a hell of a time replacing, you know, because just in general, who wants it? Great job, this guy's really doing a great job, Patrick, right? Great job. So, good job, Patrick, I don't know if he'll listen, but any other comments for Eloy? Okay, can we wrap this up into the, I saw the carport out there, is that what we call it? Carport? Looks, I think it looks great.
Looks amazing.
You know, aesthetically, people were worried and panicking, but I don't know what the high school looked like, this was great.
Solar panels.
What did I say?
You said carports.
It's solar.
But it's solar panels, it's not just the carport, it's the solar panels that we're putting everywhere. My favorite thing.
Yes.
Except in front of the scope.
But I think these look great, I just wanted to put that on the record, whatever it's worth. Okay, thank you. Mr. Fernandez, Mr. Walsh, personnel?
We had a brief personnel meeting prior to this meeting, and we just discussed potential vacancies and anticipated vacancies. That was it.
That's it? Okay, any questions for Ms. Stone?
What we can talk about, personnel.
Okay, seeing that, we'll move on to governance. Ms. Pylock?
Sure, we also had a brief meeting this evening, and the main topic was the policy emergency virtual or remote instruction, which is Attachment C1 and on the agenda today for a vote, so that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Pylock? Thanks, Dale. Mrs. Bloom, who is the president of Middlesex County School Boards, any updates?
Yes. Well, should I do student achievement first?
Your call.
Okay, let me do student achievement first. Okay. We met on the 27th, no, that's today, when did we meet, Marilyn?
20th.
20th, okay. What was discussed was something that Mr. Fernandez had brought up, was virtual reality, so the committee discussed the possibility of integrating virtual reality and augmented reality into our curriculum and instruction to enhance the learning experience. The administration will be reaching out to vendors and colleagues in other districts to learn more about how it can be utilized, and we anticipate discussing it further at our next meeting in October. The next topic was curriculum. At this meeting, we will be approving several new and revised curriculum guides. These include several high school pull-out resource math classes, two middle school electives, and 11th grade health, which is driver's ed, so there should be no controversy on that one. We had anticipated having 4th and 5th grade health approved at the same meeting, but they have not been completed for review yet, so we expect to have health grades 4 through 9, and 11 and 12 at the next board meeting, and all guides will be sent to the board for review prior to the meeting. Back-to-school nights, attendance at the back-to-school nights was good, I was at a couple of them, and I was really impressed to see how all the parents came out, so that was nice, on hot nights, sweating in the front hall.
That's great.
Literacy and math academies, Tier 3 support are scheduled to start in early October, and the Board of Ed will be asked to approve the staff of these programs at this meeting, and these academies are to help improve test scores as well. Additional world language offerings, the committee discussed the suggestion of adding additional offerings to our world language courses, including American Sign Language, beginning in the elementary schools, and Mandarin in the secondary level. And our next meeting will be October 17th.
Thank you.
Which is a Monday.
Do we, oh, I'm sorry, are you done?
I'm done with this.
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
Maybe it's Mr. Fernandez, I don't know who's, with this virtual reality, when we got companies in, are they going to demonstrate to you guys first? Like, you're going to vet them out, or are they going to do it to the whole board? How do you envision it?
Eric, right now, is working with Marilyn on finding the companies that will best meet our needs in terms of their products and resources, but certainly, they'll be coming But certainly, they'll be coming in to our Student Achievement Committee to provide a presentation. And we've asked Mr. Fernandez to join us in that since this initiative is something near and dear to him and something that he's kind of spearheaded. But then, some of the vendors that we plan on, the Student Achievement Committee decides these could be vendors we use, we could certainly have them come in and present to the board too during a meeting.
Got you. Thank you very much for that. But I've said it before, that's a great suggestion. Really great suggestion. Eloy?
I'm really looking forward to these presentations, and I think you guys are going to love it. When I first started looking at this, I thought of it, maybe because of my background, this would be something that would be applied in science classrooms. This is something that's in every classroom. I've even seen school districts that use this as anti-bullying programs. I mean, we still have a lot to learn on this, but the possibilities are infinite.
That's great.
Thanks to Dr. Labby's initiative on this. This is really, really looking forward to this.
All right. Thank you. And one other thing, if I may, and I've probably been talking about this for a year and a half, two years now, with the sign language, I would like to just kind of take a poll here tonight, a straw poll, just to see if we could give Dr. Labby direction on how we can implement this for '23. I don't think there's a reason with a year lead time that we can do it, that we can't do it. Of course, not being an educator, everything's easier for me, right? Just saying. But I just, if we may, I don't know if we need to have a motion. I don't think we do.
Before we do that, can I just jump in?
Please.
Part of what was discussed was the difficulty in
Starting, as you suggested, starting teaching basic sign language in our classrooms at the elementary level. That's something that we're open to researching to see if that's something we can fit into the curriculum. Already, our teachers have quite a bit to do. But if we can work into that, you know, somehow teaching some basic language as they enter our schools as early as preschoolers and build that up through to the point where in which we can offer something at the high school level, whether it's finding an actual teacher that can be able to teach American Sign Language. Or other districts are doing something like having a teacher teach remotely from another location while you have someone in the room that can sign, that can help and assist the teacher with the students in the classroom. So, that's an idea that we've heard from other districts they're doing. They actually have someone teaching remotely while someone's in class helping the kids with signing that they might need to do. So, we're exploring all options.
Nice. New world, huh? COVID opened up a whole lot of areas, right, that we can teach that way? So, let me ask you then, what do you think is a good enough time for you before I ask for, like, bring it up again in public just for an update? I want to be fair. I don't want...
I think, to be fair, maybe we'll get some kind of idea where we're going by December.
So, January's meeting?
Yeah.
Just to?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much. And thanks to committee, by the way. I appreciate you guys really looking into this and, you know, I hope we can do it. And I'm not going to give you the reasons why. It's nothing personal, believe me, but I just hope we can pull it off. But thank you for even considering it, you guys. I appreciate it.
And Anthony, I can speak from personal experience, taking sign language course at county college during high school. I think if we could bring that to our students and make it more readily available, it was a great experience and really offers a diverse perspective and gives our, will give our students, you know, really that, you know, experience to learn from a different vantage point and to appreciate their abilities, right, in a different way. Really great experience. So, fully supportive of if we can bring that in-house in some way creatively or directly.
And we looked at it too. I mean, we looked at the interest level it will get, like, at the high school. And we're hoping that we can get one or two classes out there. But we're not going to be able to hire someone as a teacher to just teach one or two classes. That's where the idea of maybe a remote instructor and then have someone that's in, that's an interpreter, where in which they can be there while the kids are receiving that remote instruction and provide the in-person, hands-on assistance that they'll need.
Couldn't she one day, like, do at the high school and then go to, like, an elementary school each day? Like, couldn't we just, if we're going to fit it in, fit it in on a Monday, Wednesday?
How often would they get into these elementary schools? I mean, that's conceivable if you have a smaller district. But, I mean, in a district like ours, spreading yourself around, you'd be in a, after you do your high school class, if you were going to go to each elementary school, we're talking it would take you months to get through all of our classes where you'd be only there for one month. So...
I see what you're saying. Sure.
I think that if we are going to commit to doing something like this, we're going to be reliant upon our teachers to build that foundation within their classrooms, similar to what, by the way, our multiple disability teachers do for our kids that do not have any language skills. They do teach sign language. They do use picture books or PEC systems.
Oh, that's great.
So, I think that this will benefit us in many ways, not only for our students that are hearing impaired, but children in our multiple disabilities classrooms that don't have language skills. This will help them in that area as well. So, the idea of starting slow and beginning in the elementary school level and maybe teaching a couple of signs a year, working our way into a foundation through elementary school, maybe trying to incorporate something in middle school, but then offering it as a world language at the high school level. Hopefully, we'll be able to get 40 or 50 kids that would be willing to do that, and that would cover two classes. And goodness gracious, if we were able to get more, then we can look at doing something like that. But I do know, in speaking to several of my superintendent colleagues, very difficult to find a teacher that's certified in teaching sign language.
Got you.
So, that's why the idea of having that teacher teach remotely to students while you have an interpreter in the classroom assisting the kids is probably the way we could possibly go.
Great. Well, thank you. Thank you for consideration. Again, appreciate it very much. Where are we? Mrs. Bloom? Back to you?
Yes. County School Boards Association. The big thing now is workshop. I hope everybody has signed up, and Dr. Labby informed me that we're all going to be at the TROP. Anybody who's going?
I think some might not be.
No?
We have one person that's not.
But everybody else will be at the TROP.
Okay. Okay. So, that's the big push right now, but the next county meeting is on October 6th. So, I will be at Pierre's, and someone's going to have to text me and let me know how the referendum turned out.
We will.
And I will rush back home.
Where are you going to be?
At the county meeting at Pierre's in South Brunswick. That's where we have our meeting. So, of course, if any of you want to attend, you know, you're always invited and welcome. I would appreciate for you to be there, but I understand with the referendum, everybody's going to want to hang here and see what's going on. So...
Great. Thank you, Ms. Bloom. Appreciate it. Any questions for Ms. Bloom? Ms. Bloom? Okay. Rounding off now, Mr. Fernandez, you have our Saraville Rotary update and Amboy, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rotary of Saraville in South Amboy will be attending the Irish Festival this weekend in South Amboy. If any of you have been there before, it's a nice festival. I encourage you all to come. I know it also convicts us Saraville Day, so hopefully you can get to vote. Also, thanks to the lobbying of our illustrious Vice President, Mr. John Walsh, the Rotary is looking into having a dinner to reward and honor our unsung athletes who don't normally get the recognition that they deserve. So, it's a special event. Hopefully, there'll be more details to come up on that, but that's something we're working on.
Banquet?
Yeah.
That's great. That's a great idea.
For a lineman.
This guy's idea right here.
Yep. Overworked. Appreciate it.
You're doing Mr. Unified Sports, too?
That's a horrible idea. No, no. It's something that we're looking for. Matter of fact, the Matutian, I got the idea when I was coach over there, their Rotary would run an outstanding lineman dinner. So, it was, you know, offensive lineman, defensive lineman, for, you know, all the way from the youth sports up through to high school, even freshman. It's a nice way to reward the kids who don't, you know, who do all the work but don't get their name in the paper usually.
That's a good point.
Amen.
So, we're starting out with lineman dinner, but we've also considered maybe in the future expanding it to, or having other events for some of the other ones, but...
Have you ever thought about that?
It was a great idea.
Having a banquet for Unified Sports? If we do it, I'm embarrassed. I'd never heard of it, so.
Mr. Naster provides refreshments at the end of our big events, but no, I don't think we've ever talked about doing a banquet.
Is it even feasible? Is it even feasible to have one banquet for all the kids and parents at the end of the year?
We're doing that in public. And our...
Okay.
And I chose a department where he likes that.
Right.
So, it's possible?
Okay. I know something to think about. I don't, you know, why not, right? Everyone else gets a banquet. Be nice.
Yeah.
More work for you guys. I'm sorry. I know.
The next time you need it.
Well, thank you.
Also, Mr. Vice, Mr. President.
I'm sorry. Answered, yes.
No, I just want one more thing on a separate note. It's my sad duty to inform the Board of passing of one of our own. Mr. Bobby Litschko was a custodian in our district for over 40 years, from 1968 until he retired in 2008. Mr. Litschko worked tirelessly making sure that every day our students were able to come in to a school that was safe and pleasant and a good place for an education. I know many of us on this board are old enough to have been here and benefited from his efforts. So, I'd like to have a moment of silence for him.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. And I do, you know, I admitted one thing, and I had a note, and I apologize. I just want to say our thoughts are with the parents of that student, of that Saraville resident, the 29-year-old that's missing. I'm sure that student went through our school system, so our thoughts are with you and, obviously, right, if there's anything volunteers, no? He's not a student? Was a student?
I don't think he was a student of ours.
Well, he's, right, he's one of ours anyway.
He is one of ours. Absolutely.
Anything this board can do in this administration, I'm sure we'll do it for you. So, that's it. Dr. Labby?
Wait, I have one. We skipped over District Highlights.
Oh, my apologies.
And we just have a, we just have one. I want to make sure we get in. Congratulations to SUS 4th Grader Lyric Pan, who won first place in the 2022 Girls 10 to Maureen Catherine Connolly Brinker Tennis Foundation North Regionals Tennis Tournament in the Bronx, New York. So, great job. You know, these highlights start piling up as we get to the school. And that is a pretty big, I mean, that's a pretty huge tennis tournament. Yeah, that's a... For her to win that is outstanding.
Outstanding.
She's an amazing young lady.
Where's she? What grade?
4th grader. 4th grader here at the...
Yeah. Very talented. Incredibly bright future.
Look at his chops.
Oh, I want to add something about a student, a former student, Caitlin Hustleberg. She was here for a couple, she went to Saraville School District all life, till her mom passed away and she had to go down the wall. But she actually got on to, got into Notre Dame, full scholarship with, and she's on their fencing team. So, she did quite well. And yesterday was her birthday. Happy birthday, Caitlin.
Great job. Excellent. Love those stories. Okay. So, if there's nothing else, Dr. Labby?
Okay.
Take us away. Take it away.
If I can direct everyone's attention to finance, let's begin with number 13. We're asking you to graciously accept a donation, the amount of $500, from Cooper Horowitz, to be used for our Bombers Beyond 18 to 21-year-old program, which will cover admissions fees and materials for community-based instruction. As we've said always, it takes a village, and we're incredibly fortunate to be in a borough or village in which we have so many amazing community partners that are willing to help us out in all of our programs, but especially that new program of ours that we're so proud of. Along those lines, number 14, we're asking you to approve the application and acceptance of the Special Olympics New Jersey Unified Champion Schools Grant, which we just spoke about. And Mr. Naster works very, very hard every year to secure for us. As always, it's $15,000, and we're incredibly grateful to him for the relationship that he has established with our friends over at Unified Sports so that we can continue to receive those much-needed funds to help us with our Unified Sports program. Maybe we can find some money to hold a banquet. Number 27, which you can find on page 5, we're asking you to approve additional withdrawals from Capital Reserve in the amount of $205,850 to be used for additional professional services related to the construction of the transportation complex on Cheesecake Road in Saraville. Just to give you a little update on where we are with that, we're still in the environmental research portion of the process. If you recall, when we had that public meeting, the joint meeting, we talked about, you know, does that land require any remediation? And initially, we were told no and so forth, but we've recently discovered that there are things called monitoring wells on that land, and those lands are monitoring pollution in the groundwater as well as the soil. So, I've been in close contact with our good friends from DuPont, who have been incredibly cooperative with us in terms of ascertaining, first and foremost, whether that land is contaminated, which we don't believe it is. But number two, if we're able to work around those monitoring wells, and we've been told informally that we are able to do so. So, our engineers need to get that information for them to complete their environmental study of the land so that we can get going into the portion of designing how we're going to utilize that land to build our transportation complex. We also talked about some other alternatives that require additional professional services, such as the potential infrastructure for the charging stations for our buses, as well as the electrical powering stations that we might need if we go with electrical buses. So, those require additional professional services. Any questions on those items on finance as well as any other items that are on the finance portion of the agenda?
We're just leaving an area open in case the need arises for electric?
What we're doing is we're putting the infrastructure in.
Right.
The electrical infrastructure in underneath the ground so that if we were to go ahead and purchase those buses and need to install those charging areas, you know, it's a quick, you know...
Install the device.
Install it and so forth.
If you imagine, Anthony, it's much, much cheaper to do it when everything's torn up. You're working on it now.
No doubt.
You don't want to be ripping apart asphalt and things like that to do those things.
Yeah, no doubt. It's a right move. It's a great move.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none. Let's move to student achievement. Number one, we're asking you to approve the new and revised curriculum guides that are listed there. You can find that on page 16. You can see that we are asking you to approve the 10th Grade Health Curriculum, but we know that this is a hot topic. This is really not a health curriculum. It is the driver's education curriculum. However, it falls under health. So, there are no health standards within that. This is just driver's education, and that's why we put that in parentheses. We are still currently in the process of reviewing the grades 4 through 11 and 12 health curriculum guides. Dr. Shettyak has been working incredibly hard, day and night, along with Ms. Padami and the incredible teachers that took on that role of curriculum writers, to make sure that those guides are in accordance with the standards, but also making sure that, to a reasonable extent, they do not conflict with the family and religious values of our students and their parents. Inevitably, as we've learned with some cases for K through 3, they have, and we've provided parents with the process for opting out of specific lessons and activities once they do read that curriculum. So, hopefully, by our, I think, our October 18th agenda, I know that there were a couple of guides ready to go, but we wanted to make sure our board members had plenty of time to read them. So, you can expect within the next couple of days, Dr. Shettyak will be sharing those guides with you and our Student Achievement Committee so that you have the proper amount of time to read through those standards and ask any questions that you might need to ask before we ask you to approve them. So, on that October 18th agenda, you can expect a couple of health curriculum guides. Any questions on that item or anything else on student achievement? Yes?
Yes. I have a serious concern about the careeracity. I read through the whole curriculum, and Unit 2 is labeled as STEM. And two of the general objectives say design and design. So, we're asking them to be creative, but we're not including the fine and performing[1663.47] arts in the careeracity. There are many careers in fine and performing arts, and I think we had discussed this once before and you assured me that it was going to be STEAM and it's still just STEM.
What does the A stand for?
The A. Don't mess with Mrs. Bloom.
You know what the A stands for. If they want to be small, let them be small. I'll be big.
So Dr. Shettyak, I mean, do you want to give your, Mrs. Bloom, can we give Dr. Shettyak an opportunity to?
Sure.
Do you want, you want to look something up or?
We chat.
So let me, I'll get, I'll get back to you. Dr. Shettyak will get back to you when she's ready. She's going to look this up right now, if you don't mind.
No.
Is there any other questions on student achievement? I'll move on to governance, then personnel, and then I will get back to Dr. Shettyak answering that question. Mr. Balka, you have a question?
2B, the cheer.
Or not 2B?
The cheer, the cheer team going down to Orlando for their competition. Is that a board-paid expense or?
No. The board will pay for the bus trip to the airport and back.
Okay. I was just, I was concerned because we, over the years, we stopped sending the band to away games and we stopped, we cut back on the performances for the plays. I don't want to see us flying.
Yeah, and if you remember, we also allowed the cross-country team to go to Florida a couple of years ago as well, before the pandemic. The deal with that is they are fundraising everything. Well, are we paying for the competition, the fee itself?
No.
No, okay.
We are paying no fees, not even the bus transportation.
Oh, I stand corrected. Thank you, Dr. Shettyak. Normally, we pay for the bus transportation to the airport, but we're not even paying for that, Mr. Balka. Oh, thank you, Dr. Shettyak.
Thanks.
Good. All right, so I'm going to move on to governance until Dr. Shettyak. She's ready. Eileen here.
Why would the cheerleading squad be treated any differently than any other squad in getting free buses? Like, why wouldn't we be paying for their buses?
Why would they what?
Why wouldn't we be paying for their buses?
I don't, they just included that in their fundraising.
But we, if, they shouldn't be discriminated against, right?
I don't think they're being discriminated against. I think that they fundraised for all that, all those things.
They did not request it.
They didn't request it.
They get a bus to all the away games and all their other, I think, state competitions.
Like I know our senior trip, when we, Dan and I's child, they, we paid for their bus, so I don't see why this would be questioned.
It shouldn't be.
Oh, you were questioning.
Oh, I'm not questioning.
Okay.
I'm saying, why would we deny them the bus when we've never denied anybody else?
We didn't deny, they didn't ask.
No, I know.
Right. Any more questions on student achievement?
He's asking. I'm just making my speed.
Okay.
It's implied.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, so let's move on to governance. Number two, which you can find on page 17, we're asking you to approve the 2022-2023 Emergency Virtual or Remote Instruction Plan. I believe that Ms. Pylock spoke about that when she talked about governance. You can find that on page 17. As you know, I sent you that plan several weeks ago. Hopefully you had the time to read it. If you so go so, do so and approve it this evening, I will be sending it off as required to the superintendent of, the Middlesex County Executive Superintendent, who will be approving it on behalf of the Commissioner of Education, which is required in the statute. We will then also post it on our website again soon after, if you do so and approve it. And number four, as Mr. Walsh and Mr. Esposito, as well as Mr. Fernandez and Ms. Pabon mentioned, we're incredibly happy to let you know that we're asking you to approve a memorandum of agreement with the Savelle Education Association on the 2021 through 2026 Collective Bargaining Agreement. And as you can see in the motion, not only we are asking you to approve the memorandum of agreement, we're asking you to authorize the Board President and Board Attorney to finalize and execute the collective bargaining agreement. So therefore, we do not have to wait until October 18th for you to go ahead and approve that. You are in essence saying, Mr. Esposito, Board Attorney, given that you feel everything is in order for the collective bargaining agreement, once, once that is the case, it will go into effect immediately. And I think that's something that is appreciated by the association. Any questions on those items or anything else in governance? Okay. You ready or do you want me to come back to you after I do personnel?
Come back.
Okay, in personnel, I know it's early in the school year, but we do have, you know, several of those bittersweet moments in which we are going to say goodbye to some very beloved staff members, beginning with Susan Frank, who is a paraprofessional at the Wilson School, Pam Gunter, who is a media specialist at the Arless School, Lorraine Galante, who is a cafeteria worker at the Truman School, and Donna Koblos as, who is a special education teacher at the Wilson School. So I do want to say a few things about some of the people I just mentioned, and I'm going to begin with Lorraine. Tonight, to honor Lorraine Galante for her dedicated service to, tonight, we honored Lorraine Galante for her dedicated service to the Savelle Public Schools. Lorraine has been a devoted member of the Truman School family and our food services department for the past 30 years. Working in our food service department, she is not only respected, she is revered by all and rarely ever says no to anyone for anything. Lorraine is, always has a happy disposition and demonstrates sincere excitement for her work. She is a team player that is always willing to help out with whatever is needed. She treats the students as they were her own and brings out their very best by encouraging them to use their manners, be respectful, and have fun during lunch periods. She has made such a positive impact on so many children and staff, including me, but now it's time for her to enjoy that quality time that she so very much deserves with her family and friends. We will truly miss her and we cannot thank Lorraine enough for all that she has done for the Truman School community and our food services department. Congratulations on a job well done, as always, Lorraine. And on a personal note, I've had the privilege to get to know Lorraine through the nine years that I've been in this district. And she's just the sweetest person that you'll ever meet. If you walk away from speaking to her and you are not smiling and feeling happy, there is something wrong with you. She's that amazing. I'm going to miss her terribly. I never had the opportunity, or I didn't have many opportunities to interact in person, or at least as many opportunities I would like to with her, but we always found a way to communicate with one another and I will always be forever grateful for that. So on behalf of all of our students and staff and the Board of Education, we wish Lorraine nothing but the very best in her retirement and we thank her for the impeccable way in which she performed her job and gave so much to everyone in this community. And Lorraine is here tonight.
And I just want to say, I worked at Lorraine for about, what, four years and she served my children for nine.
Yep.
I'll miss you.
Well, I've got one better. I taught Lorraine's children and I worked with Lorraine and she's a doll and I'm not going to say more because I'll get upset because I love her.
I agree. We're definitely.
She's a survivor.
We're definitely going to, we're definitely going to miss Mrs. Galante, but is she sure she wants to leave? Because I know spending time with your family sounds good, but I know her family too.
She's always around the neighborhood, you know.
Good luck. We're going to miss you. Okay, so moving along, Pam Gunter, another person that I, that I've grown to respect and revere during my time here in the district. Pam Gunter, Arless Media Specialist and Librarian, is one who will go down in the books. Pam has been with the Arless School for over 20 years. She was awarded the Honor of Teacher of the Year back in 2002, 2003. She has brought her love of books and reading to make Arless Library a place the students can explore their interests. To pique interest in her program and promote her students' work, she has always showcased the library and computer lab work so nicely in the hallways. Mrs. Gunter fosters a love of reading throughout the school and has always encouraged her students that through reading, they can accomplish just about anything. Mrs. Gunter runs the yearbook after-school program, after-school program at the Arless School as well. She previously served as president of the New Jersey School Librarian Association and has worked as a child librarian in the public library in town, in which I believe she's going to continue working in that capacity upon her retirement. Mrs. Gunter is looking forward to spending time with her husband Craig and their triplets, Rihanna, Catria, and Scott. Mrs. Gunter is skillful in many hobbies, such as cooking and knitting. We wish Pam the best of luck in the next chapter as she continues to share her kindness, knowledge, and outstanding talents with her treasured family and closest friends. And on a personal note, I will add too that, you know, being my ninth year, I mean, you can't help go back and reflect on some of the fondest memories that you have. And some of the fondest memories that I have as a superintendent in this district are the Read Across America days that Pam invited me to attend consistently every year since the day I started. And I think we, we only stopped because of the pandemic and she is so organized, so meticulous, so detail-oriented, and she does it all for one reason, because she loves the children that she works with and she'll do just about anything to inspire them to do what she loves and she wants them to love, and that's reading. So I can't personally thank her enough for inspiring me year in and year out as I went to Read Across America. It just, fabulous person, doing a fabulous job with our kids. And I was pleased, she just recently informed me that she's going to continue in that capacity, but now at the public library on a part-time basis. And again, Savelle is very blessed that she's doing that. So on behalf of all of our staff and students and the Board of Education, we thank Mrs. Gunter for everything that she's done for all of our students in the impeccable manner in which she has represented our school district, and we wish her nothing but the very best in the future.
Are we going to continue Read Across America this year? We're going to pick it up again?
I, I believe so. I mean, I think we began it to a lesser extent last year. Of course, we were still muddling our way through the pandemic, but I would expect that things will get pretty close to where they were back in March of 2018, when it was really at its high point, in which we had many, many guests and visitors come in to read to our students.
It was terrific.
And board members, if you're, if you're given that opportunity and you get an invitation, which I know you will, take advantage of it. It's one of the most amazing things that you'll experience, you know, sitting around a classroom of elementary school students as they sit on the carpet and you read to them. It truly is pure candy to the heart, so I highly recommend it.
They get so, they're so full of pride, right? They walk you to their class, you know, like they know the building, you know, like it's, they love it, the kids love it. You're a rock star, believe me, when you go there and read to them. It's awesome. And then one administrator told me, not in this district, they said, when I'm having a bad day and things are awful, they go to kindergarten. You just sit in a kindergarten class for half an hour, 20 minutes.
Oh, you get nine million hugs and then you just feel like you're on, you're on top of the world.
Yeah. She does a great job, Pam, and a wish your luck. Glad she's going to be a public librarian.
Although I will say this too, and I really do mean this, when I'm having a bad day now, I go into the cafeteria with my sixth, seventh, and eighth graders and I feel on top of the world then too. The, the amount of energy that our sixth and seventh and eighth graders have is just truly remarkable. It's amazing. They, if that doesn't pick you up, I don't know what will. Seeing that excitement, that joy and that energy that they have. So whether it's getting hugs from kindergartners or getting a chance to experience our young people in all of our elementary schools and middle school and high schools, it truly does remind you of what we are doing here.
Yeah.
It's all about them. People like Lorraine, people like Pam, they exemplify that and so didn't this next person. And I'm having trouble reading with my contacts, so I'm throwing my, my old man glasses on right now so I don't fumble my way through this again. This is also a person that's near and dear to my heart, and I'll explain a little bit why later. Donna Koblos. Donna Koblos is a special education teacher at the Wilson School, who has been in the district since 2002 and has spent her entire career at the Wilson School. For the last 10 years, she has been team teaching with Christina Zraka in kindergarten as well as first grade because naturally they loop. Mrs. Koblos is known for making connections with her students. She takes an individualized approach with all her students. She embraces her students' diversity as well as their interests. She is trained in many things, including PSYAP, and has demonstrated a special outreach to our Wilson English Language learners as well as our students with special needs. Since she will not be at Wilson in the future, she looks forward to being with her grandchild, doing crafts and volunteering in her charity outreaches. The entire Wilson School and Savelle School community wish Donna all the choicest of blessings as she pursues her dreams in the next chapter of her life. We are grateful for her service to our children and her colleagues. And on a personal note, again, having an opportunity to, to work with Donna, not only in the capacity as, you know, superintendent and teacher, she was one of our pandemic volunteers during the Be Strong Savelle Movement. She was one of those people that every single day volunteered and came out to pack lunches. She and her husband, Stephen, who by the way, is one of our maintenance workers, they're by far two of the loyalist people in this district. And again, like so many other of our teachers that were on that pandemic committee, not only were they working hard on providing virtual instruction to their students and promoting learning during the height of the pandemic in the spring of 2020, but she was volunteering on all those days, which at first was every day, and then we moved to three days a week, she was there packing lunches, rushing there to pack lunches, rushing there to go back home to work with her students. Something I'll never forget and something that I personally will be forever grateful to her and her husband, Stephen, for doing so. So on behalf of the Savelle Board of Education, students and staff, we thank her for her incredible service to our district. We thank her for all that she's done to help all of our students. And most importantly, we thank her for the way in which she has represented this school district and this community and how much she has given back to both. And we always wish her the very best in the next chapter of her life with her grandchild, with Stephen, with her entire family. Moving on, in personnel, if I can bring your attention to numbers 11 and 12 and 36, which you can find on pages 23 and 24 in the addendum, we're asking you to approve the hiring of new certified and non-certified staff. Numbers 14 and 15, which you can find on pages 25 and 26, we're asking you to approve the transfer of non-certified staff for this school year. As Mrs. Bloom mentioned earlier, numbers 19 through 23, as well as 41 through 42, we're asking you to approve teachers for the Literacy and Math Academies, Tier Three Intervention Services, English Language Learner Tutorial Services, and the Middle School National Junior Honor Society After School Homework Help for the 2022-2023 school year. You can find that on pages 27 and 31 and the addendum. Finishing up, number 25, as we mentioned earlier, with our Unified Sports Grant, we're asking you to approve personnel for that program. You can find that on page 34. And finally, number 43, and we can't thank the borough enough for the support we get with this, we're asking you to approve the employment of several teachers for the Willoughby Facilitators for this school year. And that you can find on the addendum.
Terrific.
Any questions on personnel before I hand the baton off to Dr. Shettyak to answer Mrs. Bloom's STEAM/STEM question?
Yeah, I have a question though, because I think Lucy's going to take a little longer than mine. Are these positions for the academies, they're new?
No.
I don't remember.
We've been doing this for years, Mr. Esposito.
No, no, but they, why, they seem like they're different descriptions than last year's.
No, no, we've had the Literacy and Math Academies for the past.
No, no, I know we've had those. It sounds like we're adding, is it additional or just?
The Tier Three Intervention Services, we've always had at the elementary level. We moved them up to the middle school and high school level now. In fact, but we haven't even included the high school Tier Three tutors yet. They're coming soon.
Or the middle.
Or the middle school.
So that's what's new.
But, and, and the Tier Three tutoring is just very intensive tutoring as compared to the small group tutoring, which takes place in the Literacy and Math Academies. The ELL tutoring, this is probably our third or fourth year doing that?
Yes.
What is new, somewhat new, Mr. Esposito, is the Middle School National Junior Honor Society Homework Help. I think that's in its second year.
This is the second year of that program.
Okay, thank you. It just, it didn't ring a bell and it sounded, I mean, it's great, you know, it sounds so.
Well, I think what, what may sound a little different is that we don't always approve them all at the same meeting. So I think.
And never this early. This was, this was a request, if it was mine, cutting Dr. Shettyak. This was a request that was made by our administrators that we normally would wait till December to have these people approved, but we felt like, let's get these kids started right away with these tutorial services, especially since our kids are so far behind.
That's great. Good job.
I might, it might have been, it might have also sounded different before because I might have said it in an English accent.
Maybe.
So it might have sounded a little bit different.
Okay, got you. I could do it. Thank you. Mrs. Bloom, I'm sorry. I know you. Mrs. Bloom, I'm sorry, I know you, uh, we'll go to your STEAM.
That's okay. I'm here.
Hold on.
Got no place else to be.
Oh, we have another personnel?
Your personnel, yeah. Erin, on number nine, page 21, I need to abstain on Lori Fallon.
Sorry, it was number nine on page 21?
Yes. And then, quick question for Dr. Labby. Uh, on number, number 14, page 25, we have a cafeteria manager cook. So that's an additional one, because we already have one, correct?
That's the one we're putting in the question.
Yes, it's a, yes, an additional one.
Correct.
Do you have another question?
Okay, so, um, to get back to the Career Ossity Curriculum. Okay, so this curriculum is part of our middle school career grant that we received, and it's designed to provide an overview of different career pathways and the steps of obtaining a career and, you know, writing a resume and so on. So, um, it's broken down, they, the curriculum covers, it's a quarter course, and it's an elective. Students in seventh grade elect to take this course. So, um, there is a unit on careers in STEM, one on careers in business, and a unit on careers in communication. These are all, you know, a broad overview. There's a lot of career pathways that are not included here. I mean, there's nothing about careers in the trades or education. It's, it's a broad overview, and certainly, um, you know, we can include, uh, one lesson in the STEAM, in STEM, change it to STEAM and, and cover, you know, a career in the arts, you know, if that's...
I think that would make it more well-rounded.
Okay.
Since everybody in the state is now saying STEAM instead of STEM, I always get upset when I see that we're still putting STEM in there.
No, I don't, we do, does anybody recall that?
No.
Okay.
Is there something in particular, Mrs. Bloom, you'd like to see?
No, just general, you know, that there are careers in, in the fine and performing arts that, that a lot of kids may want to, you know, follow. There's theater, there's production, there's music, there's, you know, or, it's fashion, you know.
Absolutely.
And, and I think along those lines, what I, I, I will also suggest is that perhaps there'd be a lesson where students are, because there are a number of other careers which are not included here, that they have an option of exploring and giving choices of exploring independently, some of the other...
Sure, the trades like woodworking and mechanics and stuff like that.
Right, based on their own personal interests and with the support of teachers. So, I will have that changed, Mrs. Bloom.
Well said. That concludes my report, Mr. Esposito.
Thank you very much. So before we vote to approve Dr. Labby's report, just one more time, anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none? Excuse me. Would you like to make a motion to accept our superintendent's report?
Anthony.
Oh, it's my apologies. So, yeah, yeah. Anyone from the public would like to speak on agenda items only? Eric, we have nobody online, nobody here. Okay, we'll close public. Thank you for that reminder. Um, okay, Dr. Labby, I'd like to make a motion to accept our superintendent's report.
No move.
Mr. Bloom, Mrs. Napoliton.
Dr. Walsh.
Mr. Buck.
Okay, Rolville, please.
Yes, but I accept that I noted.
Uh, Mrs. Bloom?
Uh, yes, but I have to abstain, um, on governance number four, the MOA.
Yes, on all other items?
Yes, on all other items.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mrs. Pabon?
Yes.
Ms. Pylock?
Yes.
Mr. Jean Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes. Thank you very much. So now at this time, I believe we will open it up, uh, to the district for any, any items pertaining to our district. Anyone online? No? Sure, come on up. How you doing, Ms. Smith?
Good, how you doing?
Good, thank you.
Just because, this I hope makes...
Did you say name and address?
Uh, Jeff Smith, 185 Grove Street, in the Morgan section. Uh, just because I didn't hear this mentioned tonight, and I know Miss Bloom is passionate about the fine arts and the arts, uh, congratulations to Dr. Caruso and the Sayerville War Memorial High School marching band, who participated in their first tournament of bands competition this past Saturday and placed second place out of the six bands that they competed with. So I feel like they should get a round of applause and some good recognition for that.
Yeah, great. Thank you, very good.
I'm sure they will be in the next highlights if they didn't make this one. I know it was probably a tight, uh, they didn't make press time.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't get word of that one, but that's going to be in Talk Soup next week, too, though.
Great, excellent, thank you. Good point. Okay, uh, seeing as nobody online, nobody left, we will, uh, close the public portion, and, uh, we'll open it up one more time to the board for any items that are on their mind. Would you like to discuss questions?
I forgot. Lucy's steps are in place behind the press booth. Thank you very much. I haven't climbed them yet, but I will.
Right. So is that what we're calling them, Lucy's steps?
Well, that's what they've been calling them.
Oh, they're called a staircase.
They called it my fence, they called it my steps. I want little signs.
I, I recall, I recalled the fence name having a couple of other...
A couple of expletives, yeah.
Different words added to that.
We're trying to maintain our cuthier, please.
Good job.
So, yeah, thank you. The, the coaches also were happy to have the steps. So I have to climb them and see how they...
Well, kudos to Mr. Coleman's Burger for, for that, so I, and I, I know he's listening, probably somewhere.
And the announcer's been doing a great job of the game, too, Lucy.
Oh, yeah, good announcer, yeah.
He does very good.
Um, I just want to say, remember, uh, the referendum is coming up, cool the schools, even though you cannot tell people to vote for it, because that would be unethical, we can remind them to vote whichever way they choose. So let's all do that and, uh, have a great week, and I'm going home to celebrate my birthday. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you.
All right. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Yeah.
My child is corrupted in middle school with that voice.
Sure, Mr. Fernandez?
Yeah, I just got one thing. It's, it's been bothering me for a long time now, and I thought we'd just air it now. Um, this, this is the second time it's happened, where Dr. Labby has saved the board and our township's significant resources by doing two jobs at the same time. Um, and it really, it's really annoying, you know, stop it, we want, we want to spend the money, so please. Um, no, seriously, thank you, and I think the, the public should, should know that in addition to the numerous duties that you do as superintendent, this is, this isn't the first time that you've stepped in and taken on another tremendous job, being principal as well.
Thank you very much. And, uh, I was talking to Mr. Buck about that earlier. I, I, I love it. I mean, I really do love it. Um, so, it, it's, it's a privilege.
He's a machine. Machine.
And let me tell you, I personally had, had the pleasure of being in the school when you did your announcement.
Me, too, it was back-to-school night, right?
It was fantastic. I, I happen to be there for another matter, and, uh, I, me and my wife both enjoyed it.
That's great.
We have, we have the most amazing children in the world here, and to be around them, gosh darn, I'm the most blessed person around.
The feeling is mutual. The kids love you, and they just, they really do. They just have a great time with you.
He's corny, but I really like him.
He's really loud, but he's, you know, he makes us laugh.
Enthusiasm.
Mom, is he going to say that, on Wednesday? Is he going to say hump day? I'm like, yay.
We are. Wait till Wednesday comes. Hump day.
You did. Yeah, I just want to remind everybody that Dr. Labby, um, is well-received by the children, and children know the truth, okay? So, they know, they have more insight and more like, I don't know what you want to call it, but they can tell when somebody's good. And the fact that every kid, no matter where Dr. Labby goes, loves him, maybe except the ones that he has to discipline, but the ones, uh, you know, that most kids love him, and I think that the parents need to recognize that and give them a little bit more what's due to them, which is praise and appreciation.
Oh, that's very nice.
Enjoy the love fest. Doesn't it come off awesome?
My gosh, I'm taking you all home with me, to talk to my wife.
We could still get home and see judges play some bad.
Good point. Okay, anyone else? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Mr. Bloom, Mr. Walsh, Mrs. Bloom, all in favor? Aye. Post. See you later.
Have a great evening.
Adios.